Thanks, Tom. This meeting of the City of Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to water. It is 6:08 PM. My name is Tony Archilevich and I will be chairing this proceeding. This meeting is a continuation of the January 11, 2018 meeting which heard an appeal by the Irish Cultural Center of a decision by the City of Kingston Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission dated November 2, 2017, denying the Irish Cultural Center a preservation notice of action for proposed work at 32 Abiel Street, Kingston, New York. I'm going to introduce the other board members, introduce themselves. We have a stenographer, Laurie Kuratolo, and board members could please introduce themselves. We do have Joe Fitzgerald, a member of the board who is not present, and Chris Larson, who is the senior alternate, will be taking his place until Joe shows up. We have Owen Harvey, an alternate, who is recusing himself from this proceeding. So, the other board members would please introduce themselves as either a board member or alternate, please.
Mary Dowell, alternate.
John Monahan-Goldman, board member.
Brian Cafferty, board member.
Cassandra Burke, board member.
Chris Larson, alternate.
Okay, Chris, as I said, will be an alternate but will be board member for purposes of... First order of business, I'd like to read a personal statement, if I may. At the January 11, 2018 zoning Board of Appeals meeting during public comment, my personal recorded comments from a comprehensive plan zoning subcommittee forum held on October 17, 2017 were submitted for the record. I feel compelled to address these comments at this time. I was speaking at the public forum as a committee member, addressing the consultant's language regarding an appeal of a hypothetical Historic Landmarks Commission decision. I felt that the wording in the final draft did not reflect the discussion and conclusion of the committee. My opinions, as well as other committee members, varied on this topic when we met as a committee. I gave my opinion of what I felt at the time was reflected in current zoning law, reading it as a layperson. The discussions surrounding the appeal process centered on better defining ambiguous language. I am not an attorney. After bringing the question in after consultation with Corporation Counsel at the December 14, 2017 zoning Board of Appeals meeting, I was told that the matter was researched. The legal opinion was that the Zoning Board of Appeals may hear an appeal of a non hardship Historic Landmarks Commission decision. Upon receiving that opinion, I am now performing my assigned role as zoning Board of Appeals' Chair. This evening, we will have no public comment as this meeting is a continuation of a previous meeting held on January 11, 2018. We will, however, receive written statements until the end of the workday tomorrow at the building's safety offices, and they may be given to Julie or Tom or one of the other staff members. At this time, I'd like to call the Irish Cultural Center Attorney and any individuals joining him, as the board has some questions to ask of Mr. Porde, the attorney. They could come up here, please. Evening. Please. Could everyone please state their name, affiliation, et cetera, for the board or for the stenographer, please?
Name is Ronald Porde, that's P-O-R-D-E-Y, on the project type, ICCHV.
Robert Carey, representing the Irish Cultural Center.
Thank you, gentlemen. The board has indicated they have some questions. I believe you were sent from our Corporation Counsel a notification of the question, and I'll read the question. The Zoning Board of Appeals requested a written outline of all boards, commissions, and/or other entities that have reviewed the project at issue, and a brief description of the changes to the plan that were made at the request of these boards, commissions, and/or entities, and the result of these reviews. Was the question sent to you directly?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
We received that and responded on January 24.
And the zoning Board of Appeals members, they do have your response before them, but if you could briefly review that, that would be great.
Do you have the response?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just... Glasses on here. Okay, we received a request... I'll read the substance of the request, Corporation Counsel, the other day, asking us to supply a writing outlining all board stations and/or other entities that have reviewed the project at issue, and a brief description of the changes to the plan that were made at the request of these boards, commissions, and/or entities, and the result of those reviews. We supplied the information requested to the extent possible in a short time line, and we drafted a letter, which was sent yesterday, back to Corporation Counsel and the CBA, providing an outline to the extent that we could supply. So, in the outline that we provided, I'll just go through the list of the other boards and agencies that we've been before during this nearly two-year process with this application of the ICC project in Manhattan. Of course, we've been before the City of Kingston Planning Board with respect to site plan review, and also the Planning Board of the City of Kingston has acted as the agency for the secret review required for the project. Actually, the city was responsible for uploading and sending the project documents to SHIPPO, that's the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. That was done through the Planning Department over the course of a several month period. We also have been before the city's Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission, HLPC, which is the substance of this here and tonight, as well as the Heritage Area Commission for LWRP review, that's the Coastal Assessment Review, that happened earlier on, went through a detailed review at that. We, of course, the project also received scrutiny from the zoning enforcement officer with respect to some zoning issues that were raised early in the project that went up on appeal before this Zoning Board of Appeals, in which certain neighbor had challenged the zoning district within which the property is located, that the ZBA held it in favor of the applicant, ICCHV, that the ZBA decision was not appealed to the New York State Supreme Court in an arbitrary proceeding with Judge Richard Ma presiding, and the judge also held in the ICCHV's favor dismissing the action. And then we have been before the... Well, actually, the planning board is responsible for submitting the documents to the Olson County Planning Board, their review, and they rendered a letter that was sent to the planning board, which we responded to as we're required to, to the planning board directly with respect to the UCPB letter. So, that's a total of eight agencies that we've been before, and I'll just give you a little more detail if you can turn the page to my letter response. So, in a nutshell, this project has been before the planning board, at least this time around, since March 23, 2016, when we submitted a detailed application to the Planning Department to get this project on the planning board calendar. The first order of business with the planning board was to make a secret determination and to designate themselves as lead agency. They then notified any what's called involved agencies or interested agencies to confirm their status as lead agency, and that was confirmed, and it was so resolved. Just so that you know, clarification, this project requires no variances. This project is simply subject to site plan review and is in compliance with all applicable bulk and zoning regulations. This is a totally legal project. One might never know from some of the attempts to intervene in the process, but this is a legal project. The ICC has appeared on numerous occasions before the planning board and undergone extensive site plan and secret review. A comprehensive full environmental assessment form, over 70 pages, I think 74 pages to be exact, was submitted to the planning board for its review. It detailed every review criteria required under secret. It was subject to multiple revisions afforded by the planning board and was submitted by the ICC to the planning board as a lead agency. The secret process was finally completed on about July 10, 2017, when the planning board made a secret determination after several reviews, a determination of nonsignificance, which is referred to as a negative declaration. The planning board voted five to zero in support of the negative declaration. Among the changes that were made to the project during the secret and site plan review process was, and these are just examples of the key changes that were made. Number one, the applicant ICC eliminated a proposed second-floor banquet facility with the space being redesignated primarily with classrooms and offices. And just for clarification purposes, this building has a basement level, which is, we propose to contain a small theater, and then a first and second level. So, when I'm referring to the second level, it's the third level of the building of the second level, because the first level is actually under break for the most part. Number two, the ICC then converted the first floor to a flex space for art exhibits, social events, meetings, small performances, a teaching kitchen, and a restaurant area. Originally, that area was going to be more dominated by the concept of a restaurant, but that scaled back substantially. Number three, the reduction in the width of the building, the building was reduced by three feet, and actually was reduced... It originally was even a wider building, but with respect to this application, it's been in effect for the last two years. The building was reduced by three feet, and that resulted in a reduction in building size by approximately 676 square feet. The building height was reduced by one and a half feet. The Abiel Street entrance and parking area originally proposed was redesigned based on input from various sources, including the UCPB, which I'll get to in a moment, and it included the elimination of 10 onsite parking spaces in order to allow for greater pedestrian access, shuttle bus drop-off and pickup, and improved traffic flow and access within the parking area. Number six, there were unrelated design modifications, including improvements to delivery access and trash pickup. And those changes were made to reduce any types of disruption or noise for the neighbors. Number two, the New York State Parks Recreation Historic Preservation Office, which is, the acronym is referred to as SHIPPO, the case that the Planning Department had consulted with SHIPPO and provided copies of plans and other relevant documents in connection with the site plan and secret approval for this project. SHIPPO reviewed the project over the course of several months and provided three separate review letters dated September 30, 2016, December 2, 2016, and May 1, 2017 to the planning board. The ICCHV, through its planning consultant, Matthew DeRue-Coffe Associates and Willa Resta, provided extensive responses to SHIPPO's September 30 and December 2, 2016 review letters, and the ICCHV made several changes to the original proposed design in response to SHIPPO, culminating in SHIPPO's approval letter for the project dated May 1, 2017, which was sent to the planning board and a copy to me. Among the changes made in response to SHIPPO's review and the related reviews of the planning board, HLPC, and Heritage Area Commission, was reduction in width and height of the building, elimination of five-foot-high solar panels originally proposed for the rooftop of the building to reduce the building massing, change in brick color from yellow to traditional red, as well as changes in window shapes, architectural style, and other factors. And by the way, a copy of the May 1, 2017 SHIPPO letter is attached as Exhibit C to my memorandum of law, which I have written in so that you can look at it there a few minutes later. Number three, the HLPC, the city's Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission. Now, we had appeared before them on several other occasions, but it sort of culminated in the December 9, 2016 letter, in which the HLPC identified some similar issues to those identified by SHIPPO. And by the way, when Matthew DeRue-Coffe Associates had responded to the SHIPPO letter, they combined the December 9 comments letter of the HLPC with the comments of SHIPPO, because they were so similar. And there was an extensive addendum attached to our EAF, our secret documents, reflecting all those changes, plus the written response to SHIPPO by our planning consultant, Matthew DeRue-Coffe Associates, which satisfied SHIPPO's consent. So, in that December 9 HLPC letter, there were issues raised that are very similar to SHIPPO comments, and some other issues that related to parking, lighting, size of building, scale of building, location, sometimes that's referred to as sighting, impact on neighbors and excavation items. As I explained in my memorandum of law, many of those items were outside the limits of both of the HLPC's jurisdictions and were or have already been addressed by other agencies, such as the planning board, which actually has the proper jurisdiction over such issues, as well as their jurisdiction over the secret review process. The HLPC also included several observations that did not require any changes to the ICCHV, which we discussed at this meeting. Even though the redesign of the building satisfied SHIPPO, the HLPC still had further subsequent comments, including requests for certain changes to the sizing of the windows, changes to east and west of the sides, reline of doors, and other related details. In response, the ICC added brick pilasters, aligned doors, standardized windows, provided samples of bluestone, brick in colors, increased the setback of the rooftop railings, and added landscaping. Among other things, all of these changes resulted in satisfying the design concerns of the HLPC, as evidenced by a six to one vote in favor of the ICC on the specific criteria of building design. The result of all the changes made by the ICC at the request of the HLPC was that when the members voted on the applicable landmark criteria, the appropriate criteria, the vote went in favor of the ICC in three of the four criteria considered, and a copy of that December 9, 2016 letter I'm referring to from the HLPC is attached as Exhibit F to the memorandum of law that you already have.
Mr. Porde, can I ask you a question? Did the HLPC participate in the secret review process?
No. As I explained in the memorandum of law, the HLPC does not participate in secret. They're actually specifically excluded from secret review. That's the state law, not my view, and I do have a section in my memorandum that goes into that in some detail. Landmark commissions do not have jurisdiction to engage in a secret review, and they don't participate in secret review. Their role is ministerial with very limited discretion, only with respect to the historical aspects of an existing building typically, and in this case, to a new project. And I think that was the point that we made in the memorandum of law, that during the HLPC review, and really why we're here tonight, is that some HLPC members started extending their limited role by getting into concerns that were not within their limited jurisdiction, such as the size of the building, the location of the building, setback issues, so on and so forth.
Do you, to your knowledge, did any of the HLPC members participate as individuals in the secret process, aside from their role as members of the building?
No, I do not recall any HLPC members... You mean getting up and making public comments?
Yes, that were a part of the secret record.
No, I do not recall, not at the planning board meetings where the secret review was taking place. Whether they were there or not, I don't know, but I don't believe they made any comments. And also, just to expand on that, the HLPC had made comments to the planning board, which they did, that December 9 letter that I'm referring to is actually addressed to the planning board, it's not addressed to us. And that's the mechanism for the Landmark Commission to express some concerns that may get taken up by the planning board, who has the expertise and the appropriate jurisdiction to factor all those comments into their ultimate decision under secret and site plan review program. That's how that works. But it's not the place for the HLPC to take over that role if they're unhappy with what the planning board's doing or any other agencies. The architect just handed me a note that the solar panel power pack, which is three to six feet tall, powered...
Three and a half.
Power.
Was... Oh, it was three and a half feet, not five feet. Is that what you... So, I apologize, it's three and a half feet, not five feet. But those are going to be rooftop-mounted panels that would be visible from certain perspectives. So, we eliminated them to really reduce the massing of the building, so if you were looking at it from a distance, it would be shorter and appear shorter.
And they're solid versus open ground.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It pertains to something that you mentioned before about the delivery access. What were the issues with delivery access, and how does that change?
Well, Bob and Bragg each up in, but essentially what it was is that originally, the access, we were going to have a dumpster on the side of the building where the trash company would have to back in, pick up the dumpster, and you know, it slams into the back of the dumpster. That would make too much noise, and it would be a little disruptive having them back in. You know, they could come very early in the morning, so we eliminated that, and instead are going to be using trash cans that will be brought out and picked up and eliminate all of that destruction. Now, moving on to the Heritage Area Commission. So, the Heritage Area Commission is another city agency that deals with the LWRP and goes through this process called the Coastal Consistency Review. And now, this is an advisory opinion only by the HAC, and the purpose is they... There's a... We didn't include this, but I may have a copy, but it's a multi-page form, and we spent a few hours before the HAC... The HAC, they go through a list of questions and criteria to determine whether this is consistent with the standards for coastal consistency of where in a certain part of the city. Because of our proximity to Roundup Creek, part of this district falls within that criteria. So, we went through that with them, we had two or three meetings, I think. The last meeting was a long draw-out meeting, it took, I believe, a few hours, if I'm not mistaken. They went through every number of these things, the members of the HAC were able to provide comments, ask questions, go back and forth with each other. I believe legal counsel was there for the city, I believe Sue Cahill was there. Anyway, the bottom line, that was completed on September 28, 2016, and they rendered their advisory opinion to the planning board in the coastal consistent review. They found the project to be consistent, or consistent as modified pursuant to PB review, which means that if there were any concerns, they addressed them in their advisory opinion, goes to the PB, the planning board, and the planning board again incorporates that into their overall decision-making process. And that was a very positive review. And that was in September 2016. Then we have the zoning issues that were raised by a couple of the neighbors, and so, in a nutshell, in that regard, the neighbors had made a request to the zoning enforcement officer, as they're supposed to do, they followed the proper procedure for this. They made a request, they wanted essentially an interpretation from the CEO of the City of Kingston as to what zoning district this property was located with. They had raised an issue claiming that we weren't in the zoning district that we thought we were, and that went before the CEO. He made a determination stating that we were in the correct zoning district, which is the West Rand Subarea within the Roundup District. They then appealed the CEO's decision to this ZBA. The ZBA held a hearing on the issue and also determined that we were properly located within the West Rand Subarea. The neighbors then appealed this ZBA's decision in an arbitrary proceeding, and we prevailed in that, and the city prevailed, the city was also a respondent in that, and the court held that we weren't properly zoned and dismissed the rest of the claims. They may have also made note that maybe one or two of the claims weren't right at the time, but essentially dismissed the case. The Olson County Planning Board also has jurisdiction over the project because of our proximity to the Wards End Bridge, I believe, we're within 500 feet of that, that's considered a state highway, a state facility. So, what that does is that draws us into the UCPB's jurisdiction. UCPB reviewed the project and submitted its comments and recommendations to the planning board on about December 7, and then we submitted our responses to the UCPB comments, which we are entitled to do, that goes directly to the planning board. Once the UCPB comments make the planning board, it's within the planning board's jurisdiction. And we submitted a multi-page response, and we also made some changes to the site based on the UCPB comment letter. That really prompted us to change the traffic flow, which I referred to earlier, just now in the beginning of the letter, in cooperation with the planning board. So, we changed the flow of traffic in the parking area that was originally located on the Abiel Street side of the building, of the lot. We eliminated those 10 parking spots which impeded traffic flow. We provided enhanced pedestrian access from the parking areas to building entrance, and provided parking and drop-off locations for the shuttle bus. We are going to engage a shuttle bus if we have a bench at this building where it might be crowded to alleviate any parking concerns. And additionally, we, at the suggestion of the UCPB, we included lighting on Company Hill Path, and hamrails on the sidewalk leading up to its main, to the building's main entrance on the West Rand. And then the other site plan comments have already been addressed in redesigning the project in front of the other agencies. So, you know, in sum, the ICC site plan and secret approval process has been one of the most highly vetted and scrutinized projects in the city's recent history. The FEAF, that's the Full Environmental Assessment Form submitted by the ICC, is one of the most comprehensive ever submitted to the City of Kingston for a project of this limited scope and size. The ICC has worked tirelessly with each board and agency it has gone before to ensure that the project is consistent with the zoning law, including all of the landmarks provisions, the comprehensive plan of the City of Kingston, and the Riverport Implementation Plan. As set forth in our memorandum of law, the HLPC, Landmark Commission that is, does not have a planning or... have the planning or environmental expertise and is not qualified or authorized to engage in an expanded review of a project outside its limited jurisdiction, which it did engage in doing. Therefore, with respect to the ICC HV project or any future project for the future of Kingston, it is not within the limited authority of the HLPC to arbitrarily impose an impassable impediment at the end of a long regulatory process, an arduous regulatory process that we've been through, and to deny PNA, which in essence is denying a building role, for a project that is in compliance with all aspects of the regulations to which it is subject and for which it is passed muster with every other agency. We do not have formal site plan protocol, but we've gone through the gauntlet of every other agency. And one of the things I'll just add, you know, that's very telling on the project is that in terms of the intervention that's been mounted against this project, there's really never been anything about it that says we're doing something illegal because we're not. We are private property, we are allowed to build this building, we are in compliance with all the zoning regulations, within all the boat requirements. Matter of fact, we could make a much larger building under the current boat requirements for the zoning district than we determined to do. And instead, what's happened is in this intervention, there's been an attempt to divert everyone's attention from that reality that this is a legal project in compliance with the zoning laws. They do it by demonizing the project, saying this is a massive building, it's going to swallow the Roundup, it'll destroy Kingston. And nothing could be further from true. This is a 16,000-plus square foot building. There is plenty of precedent for this in the Roundup, which is a commercial or mixed-use district in the City of Kingston. I have faith in this ZBA and in the city that it can handle having a 16,000 square foot commercial building erected in the city. There's nothing unusual about it, there's been much larger buildings built, and especially a building that's intended and will really be a cultural center open to the public for its use.
Mr. Porty, we're starting a little bit from, we have a question that was posed to you, so I appreciate you answering, efforts at answering the question. And I ask, any board members have any follow-up questions for this report regarding the question as I posed it originally?
May I just add one thing?
Sure. If it's one.
It's relevant, it's very relevant to this one question. As many of you may know, I've only been involved in the project for the last couple of years with this current application that's part of this hearing. But before I got involved, the ICC had made a prior application for this project. And my understanding, and I'll let my client speak for themselves, or if you have any questions regarding this, is originally this building was actually wider than it currently is. This building was actually already narrow under this application from the prior application, which had been approved by a prior version of the HLPC. So I think that's very, very key for this board to understand, that we've been knocking back and forth throughout this process in an early application with the building as wide or wider than the proposed building. The second was a big comment by current HLPC members, it's too wide, it's not too big. This was originally approved by the, a prior version of the HLPC. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And certainly thank you for answering my questions very thorough. With the board having no follow-up questions, we will move along. I do want to note receipt of a letter from Mr. Raplansky, who represents several parties adjacent to the 32 Avielle Street property. We do have received that letter from Mr. Raplansky and board members have it, and there are a number of exhibits attached that have various letters. At this point in time...
I just, I want to object to that letter, frankly, I'm not sure how much I care about what he is trying to say to the board.
Just order it in the record.
But I understand, I did not get a copy of that letter and he intentionally left me out of the loop on that letter and his prior letter to this board. So if he is, first of all, this board has graciously let the neighbors participate in this, in the public proportion of this at the last meeting. If Mr. Raplansky is claiming to represent them before his board, they have no standing to be involved in this hearing. We are the aggrieved party, and this is a hearing with respect to the ICC, I'm just pointing out some technicalities here. And so it's hard to tell me whether he is submitting this, these materials, knowing that he's not a party, or if he's trying to interfere with our legal rights in this process, I'm objecting to that because it would be very unusual and not permitted in the court of law for an attorney to submit documentation to a quasi-judicial board like the ZBA without copying a counsel for the actual party before the ZBA.
I think maybe a follow-up, a little discussion about protocol, if he's aware of that, that's beyond purview of the zoning board, the attorney, attorney protocol. And I do want to acknowledge your objection and certainly you can respond in writing to us. The pile has grown thicker, the responses do responses, so if you'd like to add another one, so be free. Okay, at this point, I'd like to excuse you gentlemen from the front and I'd like...
I'd like to ask you just one question.
Okay.
Mr. Porty, on the last comment made with regard to the former approvals by the HLPC on earlier application, are you aware of whether or not there, I see Mr. Grunblatt, are there any other members that still are on the HLPC today that were on the HLPC then? So, Mr. Grunblatt?
I believe Alan Baer is on there.
Grunblatt and Baer.
Okay, well.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to call the official witness questioned by the board, so thank you, if you can take your area there.
Okay, will you leave these doors up?
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call as witness, Mr. Tom Tiano, please. Okay, would you please state your name for this, deny for your position?
My name is Thomas Tiano, I'm the deputy chief in charge of building safety division for the Kingsman Fire Department, City of Kingston, New York.
Okay, and as such, in that position, you handled zoning issues, zoning law, questions, requirements?
Yes, that's correct. One of my additional duties right now is the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay, the board has heard on a number of occasions by various people, speaking in public and attorneys, letters, so I want to ask you directly, Tom, if I may, to the best of your knowledge, are all lot and bulk requirements in the City of Kingston zoning law for this building proposal met at this particular time, to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah, I did some research, I mean, the building is located in the RT district for the requirements of the RT district. The proposed development by the Irish Cultural Center is within the guidelines and requires no additional variances from zoning board.
You took the next question out of my mouth there. So no additional variances, at this point, to the best of your knowledge, will be coming before the zoning board appeals for this proposed building?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I have a further question. A, some minutes were forwarded to us today of a September 6, 2012 Historic Landmark Preservation Committee meeting, commission meeting, and January 7, 2016 Historic Landmark Preservation Commission meeting. In your capacity within the Building Safety Division, do you attend on a regular basis the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission meetings?
Yes, I do. I was not involved with the Building Department in 2012, so I was not at that meeting, however, I was present at the 2016 meeting.
You were present at the 2016 meeting. Do you have in front of you minutes from that meeting?
Yes, I do.
Would you like to summarize for me, please, the agenda item 34R Avielle Street, Bob Carey, at the January 7, 2016 meeting?
On January 7, 2016, a presentation was submitted to the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission by the applicants for the ICC project at 34R Avielle Street. Request was that the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission issue a letter of recommendation so that the proposed work being done there could proceed to the planning board with the approval of the preservation, the Historic Preservation Commission with regard to the development of the project. The commission did have several questions and in the letter that was sent to the planning board, they specifically offered a conditional approval.
What was the date of that letter, please?
That letter was dated January 20, 2016.
And addressed to?
It was addressed to Mr. Bob Carey. He is the applicant who had asked that the letter be sent to the planning board, and I believe that Mr. Carey delivered it to the planning board personally.
Does the copy of your letter indicate in the opening paragraph that Historic Landmark Preservation Commission is offering to Mr. Carey a letter of conditional approval? Is that in your letter also?
That's exactly what it says, it's conditional approval, and then they do state the issues of the condition, which are, there was some discussion regarding the size of the Roman style brick that was to be used on the building. The Landmarks Preservation Commission felt that the oversized brick was out of place with the scale of the bricks that were used in the historic district there, so they did recommend a change in the bricks. And the other condition regarded the proposed solar panels that were going to be placed on the roof. The commission felt that a carpet wall should be erected in front of them high enough that the panels would not be seen from the streetlight. Those were the two conditions that they put in here, and it also states that should any variances from the zoning board of appeals be needed, that they reserve the right to have these changes come back before them for review.
Has any change to the setback in bulk regulations from prior? Were there any changes to, to the best of your knowledge, were there any changes to the setback in bulk regulations that would require another review by the HLPC?
The, I believe the original plans at this time in 2016, the footprint of the building went from property line to property line width-wise, which was an allowable use of the dimensions there. The conditions have changed, the Irish Center now is using the other proposal, a setback off the property line, that actually made the building footprint smaller.
Smaller?
It is smaller now than what was it, what was it not did in 2016.
So according to this, the, making the building smaller would require an additional review by the HLPC, would that be an accurate statement?
I believe that's what they wanted to do. Any, any changes in that would require a review by the HLPC.
And who is this letter copied to, please?
The copies of this letter went to zoning board of appeals and the planning office and was signed by the then-chairman of the committee, Yuri Gonslaw.
I guess this is a loaded question, but you're a big guy with big shoulders. Reading that letter, would you say the HLPC granted approval to this project in January 7, 2016, Adam Eagle, by that membership of the committee, of the commission?
I would say that the committee did, or they did give a conditional approval and the steps that they asked to be corrected, I believe that the Irish Center did address the brick size and the solar panels, yeah, so...
And making the building smaller.
Absolutely. If, if I were a betting man, like you say, then I would bet that they had given approval for this proposed building, yes.
And you were at that meeting?
Yes, I was.
Any questions from any other board members?
Were you present also at the September 23, 2016 meeting of the HLPC?
2016, 2017.
I'm sorry, I'm reading wrong. The meeting that took place that generated this transcript?
Yes, I was, I was present at the meeting in September 2017.
Okay. And this is probably also a loaded question, but there was a lot of discussion, this was the meeting in which the vote was taken on the various criteria and the ultimate decision to issue a preservation notice of action or not.
That's correct, it was substantial discussion, back and forth by both sides, most of it dealing with the appearance of the building and the scale as to how it would look in the neighborhood. The proponents for the Irish Center did come up with drawings that were requested by the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission to show how the building would fit into the landscape there, and then questions were brought about the size of the windows, questions were also brought about the color of the brick and the color of the bluestone that was going to be used for the rear foundation. And all these questions got answered and then the vote was taken for the preservation notice of action.
So that was September 2017, so between January 7, 2016 to September 2017, many more questions were raised. You were at all the meetings in the interim there, pretty much?
The Irish Center did not come up before the Historic Landmarks Committee during that time. They were before other groups and it was only, I believe, August of 2017 that they did appear again before landmarks. At the time, there was a zoning issue that had come up between there, so they were not before landmarks during that period.
All the additional questions came up in August 2017?
Yes.
All the two questions that were raised?
Yes, most of the, and all those questions that were raised in August of 2017, the majority of them dealt with the size of the building. This was the committee's feeling that the building at this time, the way it was presented, was too large for the proposed size.
Any other questions for Tom at this point?
Just one other. During that meeting, is it in your opinion that the question, the meeting we were just talking, the, yes, right, we're still on the same page? We're still on the same page. Is it in your opinion that the conversations, questions, concerns of the members, were they confined to the criteria for which they were supposed to be?
In my opinion, they were not. It's, again, my opinion that the committee was overstepping their bounds in some of the questions that they had asked. Many of them regarded site plan, which again is a planning board issue, not the Landmarks Commission issue. The size of the building does not come into the criteria that the section in zoning pertains to the preservation notice of action that the Landmarks Commission is supposed to issue. It does not specify any size requirement that they were supposed to measure this building by.
Thank you. Any other questions? Tom, thank you very much. At this point in time, I'm going to ask for a recess and for a consultation with the attorney, please.